All right, you should be good to go.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 18th Board of Selectmen's meeting, the 5 o'clock. I will call on Tim to read the statement from the governor.
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions on the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 19, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. I've got double audio here. Uh, let's see, gather in one place. This meeting of the Freetown Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort is being made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting well in progress may do so by accessing the live stream of this meeting on the town's YouTube channel, youtube.com/freetownma, or accessible by visiting freetownma.gov/frecamp. In the event the live stream is unsuccessful, I am recording this meeting and the recording will be posted to the town's YouTube channel as soon as I am able to following the conclusion of this meeting.
All right, and tonight it's just the three selectmen, David and Ally, correct?
And me.
And you. Can't forget you. All right, let's get into it. Interdepartmental transfer request for the highway full-time employees. I'm actually gonna have, after this one, I'm gonna have Tim read the agenda so we can just follow along if you don't have the agenda on another screen. So the transfer, the highway department is looking for a transfer from the full-time employees account unto, and into the overtime account in the amount of $1,000.
A quick question on that?
Sure, George, go ahead.
The highway department was only working two days a week, I believe, per employee. Is that correct?
That was correct, yep. They're back full-time today.
So how did they accumulate overtime if they were only working two days a week?
I'm sure that, once again, this is submitted, uh, submittal from Chuck. It's not from me. Uh, I, I would suspect that it was, they get called out either at night or on the weekend.
We don't know?
I don't, I don't know that, no.
Uh, do you think we should? Do you think we should sign out before we approve this?
I, I can do that if that's what the board desires, yes.
I think that that's, I think that's the route we went into last time. Um, but this amount, uh, before it was just for, uh, a request for the money to, to move on to the, um, finance committee. But this time they're asking for more money and it's just a line item request from one to the other, so.
It's an, it's an interdepartmental transfer that they're requesting versus a finance committee transfer.
I, I mean, I, I agree with George on this one, like, um, I understand that contractually they are being paid as full-time, but really, um, they weren't working the full week, so I, I guess I would just want an explanation as to why and what for. Charlie?
Okay, uh, yes, um, I, I have trouble with the request that was made for the transfer and the articulation of what was the overtime situation. Yes, they weren't working 40 hours a week and so I don't know how they incurred the overtime. Uh, as to this, though, my view is it's a little bit different in that apparently he's withdrawn, uh, though I, I'm assuming that, and I don't wanna assume anything really, um, that he has withdrawn the request for the transfer, uh, from the tra, uh, from the, uh, oh, uh.
Finance committee.
Yeah, finance.
Reserve fund, that's correct.
Okay, and he's asking for this transfer within the budget, which I don't have a problem with the transfer within the budget, but I do have a problem with if they did pay overtime uh, in those, uh, two instances which they, they articulated. So, um, I guess, uh, the issue I would have, I wouldn't have an issue with the budgetary transfer from line to line, but I would have, and for future, there, there's probably gonna be future, there may possibly be future overtime instances as we go for the rest of the year, which he is, I'm hoping, uh, that's what he's, you know, uh, thinking of. But that being said, um, I think there is two different issues here. I think we should get a, a clear, uh, um, idea why, if the overtime was paid in those two instances that went to the, uh, reserve fund, uh, but for this, for the future, I don't have a problem with.
All right, so let's, um, get a clarification on exactly what this money is for and if, in fact, they were paid for overtime, um, for the last two previous indications that they said. And then, um, or is this just, um, in anticipation of going forward? So we'll hold off on this and put this on, um, for the June 1st meeting.
Okay.
Okay, um, the next thing are the change orders for, um, the, uh, police station. Um, we haven't done the change orders in a while. Um, we have been waiting for them to come in, so they're finally in and I will go over them one at a time and if anybody has any questions, um, or do you want me to do, you wanna go over them singularly or all at one time?
I don't have a problem. I don't know, George, if you have a problem, you want any discussion, if you want any discussion, um.
Not so much discussion, as I would like to know what the change orders are, trying to get the, uh, document. I, I just pulled it up and, uh, it, this is for $468,000, is that correct?
No, 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 no.
Thirty-nine thousand?
There are, there are several changes. I'll just go over them and if you have a question, we'll, we'll go over it, okay? So change order number 20 is in the amount of $18,191.05, and that was.
When you say 20, uh, I guess I.
It's the first, it's the first one in the packet and if you see under the contract, it's changes follows and if you go under, under, um, that, it says, uh, tower pad shoring, two-week rental included, reference PCO number 20. Do you see that?
No, not yet, uh.
Okay.
Is there a page number? Like, I'm on page one.
Yep.
George, are you looking at the spreadsheet or the actual, uh, change order itself?
The document.
Yep, it's number one. It's number one.
Okay, all right, so.
It's a contract amount that's increased gives you the total amount that each.
Twenty-four thousand, seven hundred, is that correct?
No, this one is for eighteen thousand, one ninety-one oh five.
What's like the fourth line down, one, two, three, four, fourth line down on the AIA document G701? And it then gives you a reference number. It says tower pad shoring, two-week rental included, reference PCO number 20. That explains what the purpose of the change order is?
Oh, I'm, I'm looking at these and they're all page one. Okay, that's where I keep getting confused.
Okay.
Okay, so. All right, so, but it should be the first one we're talking about, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. So. The. Oh, okay, so it's eighteen thousand?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
The change, eighteen thousand and it's, uh, uh, what is it for again, David? Oh, I see, a tower pad shoring.
Yeah, that's where the description is for all of them.
Okay, now.
So as you go through them, that's where the description of the work is gonna be. And then the amount that it's increased is gonna be the actual amount that the change order is for.
Right, okay. So does anybody know what that means?
Yes, so that was to protect, um, the retaining wall because the tower is going to be somewhat close to that retaining wall and we wanted to ensure that there would be no, um, infringement upon the retaining wall, so that, that was necessary to also build the platform for the tower and to ensure that the retaining wall was protected.
Okay, all right.
Okay, um, so the second change order would be change orders number 21, 22, 23, and 27.
Okay. Right, okay.
So the framing drywall was forty-nine oh two eighty-seven. Um, the septic leach field liner, that was, um, that was actually, uh, from the, um, Board of Health agent. Um, that just is gonna, an added layer of protection that the leach field, um, is protected. The trap primer was actually in the amount of 1,0094620 was actually, um, from the plumbing inspector. Um, so there would be no backup. Um, it's just another added layer of protection for us. And their speaker wiring in the amount of fourteen thousand, six sixty-three forty, it says wiring, but it's speakers and wiring for the entire station. Um, for, um, and actually this fourteen, six sixty-three forty is cut in half because, um, it first came in at almost thirty thousand dollars and we asked them and the subcommittee, um, asked them to go back and redo this with the police chief included. Um, so they, um, reduced that amount down to fourteen, six sixty-three and took, um, a lot of stuff out.
Okay.
So those, um, change orders are in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. The next change order is actually a reduction, um, of ten thousand, one hundred and one dollars and fifteen cents.
Okay.
Um.
Just for the record, what was that for? I mean, what did we reduce?
Um, hold on, I gotta pull it up. I wanted to get the right, um, wording for you or for everybody. Okay, sorry. So that savings was the difference between a cellular BDA and a radio BDA. We own the radio BDA and a BDA is just a directional, um, antenna. Um, so we basically are using a signal booster instead and, um, that's where the savings is gonna come in for. Because, okay, all right. Um, the next change order is, um, for, oh, this is the one that gets us and we're hoping to recover some of these costs. So this is change order number 26, 29, 30, 31, and 33. We can't get away from this. It's in the amount of twenty-one thousand, ninety-one dollars and this is, um, to cover all the COVID cost. Um, the cleaning person that has to clean all the facilities and everything all day long. Um, the EMT person that has to come in and, and do everybody's temperature. Um, so that covers all those costs for, um, the past four weeks, I believe.
We all, we actually also talked, uh, talked today about the CARES Act and the money we got through that and whether or not we could potentially use some of those funds as reimbursable funds uh, because that, that is part of the COVID-19, uh, uh, expense.
Yeah, so we're gonna try to recover some of those costs through that. And then the last change order is in the amount of, um, one thousand, uh, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and that's just for a casework that, um, was not anticipated and we just needed some, um, to cover the heaters and everything else throughout the building, so, um, anyway. So I would just, um, entertain a motion to, um.
Lisa, what? Uh, before you go, you skipped one. Uh, it's a change order number 11.
Oh, that's the other one, sorry.
Conduit install.
Sorry. Okay, and this is another one that we're gonna try to recoup some money. This is, um, change order number 25 in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-four cents. And this is to install, um, all of the necessary conduit from the police station over to the tower. And the reason why we're, uh, proposing this is because we didn't want, um, the cell tower people to come in and, um, dig up everything that we just put in. We wanted everything to, to be done. So once we get carriers on that, on our antenna, we're gonna charge back those costs and, um, and, and, you know, put it into the general fund.
And these are conduits that are going to the tower from where, Lisa?
From the, from the police station.
Okay.
Yeah, from, from the new.
The con, I wanna say the conduit was running near or underneath the parking lot and we didn't wanna have to, uh, get to the point of where we have a, a co-locator such as Verizon or T-Mobile or one of those companies come in and say, oh, wait, we gotta, we gotta run it, uh, wire from, you know, the street or from a, a box off of a pole, uh, or underground to, uh, the actual, uh, cell power and, uh, then have to dig everything up that we just, uh, uh, had put there, I guess. And the other thing is, is that we are, like Lisa had made mention of, when we get co-locators, we're gonna be charging that fee back against the, the account, so to speak. That part of the, the agreement between whatever carriers are on the pole will, will then pay for the cost that we incurred to, to make it available to them.
Okay.
All right, um, the good news is, um, and I mean, these are all things that are necessary, but the other part of this is that, um, we still have a pretty, um, solid amount of money in our contingency. Um, it's one of our goals to make sure that we give money back to the town and not spend everything. Um, so the subcommittee and also Palmeroy and Associates, Taylor McDonald especially, um, has been really working hard, like, the COVID cost. Um, we just got another cleaning company, so we're gonna reduce that amount again. Um, so, I mean, those are all things that, you know, we, we've been looking at. So I'll entertain a motion to approve, um, all of the change orders as described.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tim, call the roll.
You've muted, Tim.
Sorry, Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
Uh, Selectman Sullivan?
Yes.
And Selectman Grunwald?
All right.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is, um, the, uh, ambulance abatements, um, contractual amount um, for the month of April in the amount of 106, 90463 and the write-offs, um, April 20th, um, three thousand, nine sixty-three ninety-two for a total amount of 110, eight sixty-eight fifty-five.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tim?
Uh, Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Um, the next thing on the agenda is, um, the memorandum of unders, of agreement that we had worked on, um, a, a while ago, um, and that we came to a conclusion on. Um, the highway department came back and asked for more, um, but at this time we declined and, um, we stuck to our original, um, uh, what we offered, so I'll, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Uh, yeah. I'm sorry, could you explain this to me again? We, we voted on this once before and we're changing.
No, so we voted, we, we voted as a, as a, the three of us, we voted to accept, this is gonna, this was gonna be our last and final offer, so they have accepted that and now we're just signing what we agreed to.
Okay.
Yep, doesn't change anything, keeps it the way we had voted on originally.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Most.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tim? Aye.
Uh, Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
All right.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Aye. Okay.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, um, for Monday, May 4th, um, 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
And Selectman Pacheco?
Yes, Town Administrator's report.
Uh, just as a quick, I, while, um, we were talking, I emailed, um, Chuck and Mike regarding the first issue and he, uh, Mike has responded back. Uh, that's his understanding that the overtime was either for evening or weekend callbacks. Uh, it was claimed, uh, that the employees were on call during the day and they were not physically reporting to work and that the expectations of availability, availability counted as the form of a weekday and he said that Kim might have better info on that, just. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll talk to Chuck and try to get a better explanation, you know, as the definitively what happened in terms of, you know, uh, what they did and when they did it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, on the Town Administrator's report, uh, I did forward out to everybody an ENF, an environmental notice form, uh, for a project, uh, on Innovation Way. Um, basically, it's an environmental review of a property, uh, uh, from a business that's proposing to put a restaurant, gas station, and a convenience store down on Innovation Way. Um, the project date, uh, that they're proposing will be, uh, eight, uh, September of 2021. The environmental review basically looks at all, uh, the, the wetlands, conservation issues, historical issues and things like that. If the, any member of the board wants to, um, comment, uh, about, uh, the report itself, it's available and just forward those comments to me and I will then forward them to, um, uh, to the, uh, the, uh, petitioner. Uh, we have been working on, uh, an reopening plan tomorrow. We're gonna have a department head meeting. Uh, basically to frame out, uh, what we're going to need to do in order to reopen. At this point, we're probably looking at some point in June. Uh, we're still, we still have work to do in-town hall and some of the other town offices regarding, uh, protective barriers, making sure that we have enough, um, you know, uh, cleaning supplies, enough, uh, sanitizing materials so that we can open and not have to close down because of running out of those kind of supplies. The highway department is back as of today. I forwarded out to them, uh, basic work rules regarding their operation. And as far as I know, their, uh, supervisor, Eric, was supposed to, uh, oversee those rules and Chuck was supposed to, you know, make sure that, uh, that those rules were being followed. Uh, we did receive notice, uh, from the state that we have received eight-hundred-twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars under the CARE Act. Uh, we had a meeting today between Public Safety Accounting, Board of Health, and we're gonna be filing at least an initial, uh, request, uh, up to 25% of the amount uh, that's available. Uh, the, the application is gonna be due on June 9th. Those costs are for, uh, right now are for, uh, things such as cleaning, for PVE, for signage, for overtime backfill. If there are people out due to COVID or being quarantine, quarantined, then we have an, an ability to charge back those costs and recoup those costs. There's also some discussion on the state level at this point. Uh, one of the things we can't use it for is for lost revenue. And, um, we're going to, they're go, they're examining that issue and finding out from, uh, the authorities whether or not that's something that we might potentially be able to use those funds for. So there is a possibility that that might happen and that will be pretty substantial in terms of budgeting, not only for this year, but into next year. Um, finally, uh, we have, uh, ordered the freezer for the council aging. Uh, we are not gonna be using town money for that. As I discussed at the last meeting, we're gonna use the earmarks from, uh, the Department of Tourism and the, uh, Executive Office of Elder Affairs to pay for that project. Uh, we have the highway department, uh, is going to put in a pad. Uh, the freezer is gonna be bought independently and then we're gonna do different portions of it by parceling, you know, to, uh, uh, for carpentry work and, uh, some to the highway in terms of some interior things that might need to be done in terms of cutting into the foundation. Um, the, uh, like I said, we're, we're gonna be using earmark money for that and, uh, we hopefully, uh, I explained that I wanted it on the side of the building, not in the front of the building. And I believe that that is, uh, the way it's gonna be handled at this point, so. There was a concern, I had a concern and I know others had a concern about it being in the front of the building and the last I had heard from all of the parties was that we are gonna locate it on the side of the building. That's it. Yep. Am I on? No.
All right, anybody have any questions?
I'm good.
George?
No.
Okay, um, the only thing I have for the police station is, um, we, uh, will probably be opening the end of July, that's what we're looking forward to. And then, um, having, um, a ceremony in August. Um, it will be something for the, you know, for the townspeople and for the department. Um, also, we'll be putting, um, a time capsule in. So if you have anything that you want to add to that time capsule from the Board of Selectmen, that would be a great, uh, great idea. So you guys can think about it. I already know what I'm putting in. Think Charlie already knows what I'm putting in, putting in a face mask and some hand sanitizer. That's what I'm putting in. David knows what I'm putting in. Um, that's it. Uh, so anyway, guys, think about it, cuz I think it'll be kinda neat, like, you know, in years to come for people to open up that time capsule and see what's in there. It's kind of, kind of, uh, neat. Anyway, I will now turn it over to the personnel board.
All right, um, Tim, I have a list of the agenda here. Uh, but if you'll be so kind, if I should miscue, please interrupt me, okay? Uh, but the first item of the agenda is, um, a request from, uh, Derek, uh, as, as health agent, as we know, he's, uh, been working seven days a week uh, on the, uh, COVID virus, uh, situation. He has, I believe, thirty-four hours of vacation time left and he is requesting that we, uh, consider allowing him to carry that time over because of the special circumstances that are different than, uh, most town employees. Um, so I'll put that out there for discussion.
And he would lose this, uh, at the end of June, is that correct?
Would, yes. Under general, under normal circumstances, he would. It would be, as we spoke, I don't think at the last meeting, it's use it or lose it.
Yeah, I mean, typically, I, I wouldn't have an issue with this. Uh, the only thing is, uh, last meeting, we voted not to do that for everyone. Is that correct?
That is.
I thought it was just, we were gonna entertain him as, uh, the only exception.
Right.
Or, or essential personnel, that's what you, how you left it.
That's, that's how I said it, essential personnel. And that we would take it sort of like on a case-by-case basis, but, um, Tim, you wanna read back the motion? Tim?
Tim, you.
Yep, sorry, I thought it was on, was that a Wednesday meeting or was that on the 4th? It was on the 4th. Uh, the motions were, uh, motion to encourage all union contract people and then also a motion that all non-essential employees should take their vacation time between now and the end of the fiscal year. And that vote passed two to one.
Okay, so that's not a problem, since we did say non-essential and he is essential.
I'll make a motion to allow, I'll make a motion to allow him to carry over his vacation.
Okay, motion made and, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
The motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Uh, Tim, if you'll call the roll.
Yep, uh, Selectman Grunwald?
Yes.
Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Selectman Sullivan?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, the second item is in reference to bylaw employees in fiscal year 21, potential pay raises. I, I'll just fill in every, make sure everyone's aware of what we're doing here. In the past, up until last year or this fiscal year, under the bylaw, there was a bylaws pay scale, which was lacking, I would say. At town meeting, they allowed for the selectmen to set the pay rate for town bylaw employees. And so what we'd be doing now is setting that rate. So I'll open that up to discussion.
Well, are we talking strictly, I believe it's eight employees?
I believe it is two.
Yeah, and we did discuss this in the past. And I believe that these people were not going to get pay raises this year for a variety of reasons. And my feelings on this is basically that if 98% or 99% of town employees are getting raises, these eight people could also get their raises. And I believe David had given me a calculation where that would amount to $18,000 for the year. Is that correct, David?
I don't, I don't have that exact number. That number had been provided by Kim.
You don't remember, told me, David?
It was approximately $17,000 and change. I honestly don't have that number in front of me.
Yeah, but, but it's in that neighborhood, right? I mean, not the exact number, but I believe it's between 15,000 and 20,000 max.
I, I know, once again, I know, I know it's 17,000 and, yeah, I, I don't have, I don't have it in front of me.
It's 16,000 and change, but there are only five bylaw employees, George, just so you know, not eight.
But the list I have here, just.
Health Department.
Problems with dogs, mine, I just had to let out.
Animal Control Police Chief Treasurer Director. Sorry about that, guys. All right, I have six, seven, I have eight. Health Department Building Inspector, Animal Control Police Chief Treasurer, Director of the COA, Town Clerk, Highway Engineer.
The Police Chief and the Treasurer Collector are not in, Town Administrator are not in the bylaw.
Okay.
They're contract employees.
That's handled separately, okay.
So contract employees.
Okay, all right. So if we take those out, then my feeling at least is that the people that we're talking about should get the average increase that everyone else is getting. I believe it's 2%, 3%.
It was 2%.
2%.
That's what we had discussed.
Okay.
It was originally part of the budget, but then we, we basically said we weren't going to do that.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I think they should get it. And I'll make a motion to that effect.
Can I talk?
Yeah, exactly, just before you make any motion, George, I would just like to have some discussion.
Yeah, all right, sorry.
No, no problem, go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you. So we, and like I've warned before, and like we're all aware, we don't have a budget for the town. We don't have state numbers, we don't have budget numbers, we don't have, we don't know where we're going. We can always add this in at town meeting, should we know that we have the money available. But to have a vote and to not know how much money we have in the budget is not fiscally responsible, in my opinion. Now, if you wanted to give them something, we could give them just for one year, an extra week's vacation. It doesn't cost us anything, they have, but it comes out to almost the same amount of money. I just feel like we have a fiduciary responsibility to the townspeople and to the taxpayers. And we have people in town, families, that are losing their jobs, that mothers and fathers that are not going back to work, that are on unemployment, that, you know, they may not go back to work. And yet, we're going to give people a raise. And I understand, I want to do as much as I can for the people that work for us. But in my heart of hearts, I just can't go along with it. And that's all I have to say, I just want to be on the record of saying that.
Okay, just to put this in some numbers here to kind of weigh this. We have $1.8 million in the bank that's collecting interest for abatements. And we averagely use $200,000 for abatements. We have capital stabilization fund of $2.7 million. We have capital stabilization for $1.3 million almost. We have a school budget increase of 4.7%, which dwarfs this number. So I mean, that $18,000 isn't even a hole in the snow. It's, it's so little that it shouldn't make any difference at all, no matter what happens. And I don't think it's fair for these people not to get it. And giving them a week's vacation, I think we're setting a bad precedent with that.
Okay, now, I'll, I'll just add, I guess, one question that I have is we have, we presently have contracts with our union employees. And my question, I don't want to point it at you, but I'm going to just throw it out there. But it's, are, are we going to still plan on funding pay raises for union employees?
So, well, first, it's by contract, but in those circumstances, their departments will be cut by whatever necessitates the increase. So for instance, if it's a, you know, it's going to cost $50,000 and it's not in the budget, that department gets cut by $50,000 or $100,000, whatever it is. So like in the past, when we had to make budget cuts and we laid off 50 people, it wasn't 50 school teachers that we laid off. It was police officers, firefighters, schoolteachers, Highway Department, and Town Hall. But yes, contractually, you have to pay those pay raises unless you go back to the union and you ask them not to take that pay raise for that year.
Okay, all right.
That's another side, guys.
All right, if I, George, excuse me, if I may for a minute, just give you my insight, okay? I guess the best thing for us to do tonight, well, I want to put my opinion, the best thing for us to do tonight is to put this to the side, table it, to make a decision. Because I'm not, I'm not right now in any way going to make a decision on how we formulate the, the final budget here. We, we do have money in a rainy day, so to speak, in rainy day fund. And I, I think this is a rainy day. My concern is how many rainy days are we going to have? So I, I would say, I, basically, I concur with you, George, in that we, if we're going to give pay raises to union employees, I think we have to give the same pay raise to these bylaw employees who actually literally haven't had a pay raise in five years. So my, my idea is to put it aside and we'll have to address, we'll have to address this a little bit clearer as the time goes on. I know the window is getting shorter and shorter, but I, I have a problem in a little bit of what Lisa is saying, and that, okay, we'll give you the pay rates, but we're going to cut your budget.
Can I interject?
Yes.
As far as the payroll budget in total, Lisa was talking about layoffs. Well, we just lost an employee at one of our last meetings. And I believe that that'll add to the payroll budget somewhere around $35,000, $40,000 with fringe benefits. So we've recouped that money, basically. Are you following me, Charlie?
Yeah, I, I do. I, I just, I think that we shouldn't get too narrow a sight, George. I, I'm firmly convinced that there are people who are underpaid in the town, who really deserve something. But the, the picture isn't clear enough, in my opinion, for us to make a.
The financial.
Yeah, yes, the financial picture. I mean, you're, you're talking, and I, I think, yes, we have, we have a substantial, in my opinion, we have a substantial, oh, ability to deal with a rainy day as it is. But I, I want to see how many rainy days we have.
Okay.
And to be perfectly honest, within, to some of what Lisa said, I don't know what the school game plan is at all. We haven't, we haven't heard anything that way. So I, I get, my, my point is just, I think that if we make a decision firmly here, one way or the other, we're likely to make a decision that we're going to have to come back and deal with at a, at a later time.
All right, how about that we look at this in, in six months or pick a time when this blows over, hopefully, and we vote tonight to make these raises retroactive if conditions are agreeable to do this, you know, in six months?
All right.
Now, I feel very strongly that if you don't pay people what they deserve and what they should get, you're going to get a bunch of disgruntled employees, which in the long run will cost you more. Turnover costs you more also. And this is a very, very bad business decision.
Okay.
So.
I, okay, go ahead, Lisa, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I think a bad decision is not having a budget and, and not knowing where we're going to be. And then we also have to bond for the police station. So we don't want to take everything out of the rainy day fund because our bond rating is at an A+. And we don't want to lose any, you know, we don't want to lose that bond rating. So I think we have to be careful about, and yeah, we're only talking about a minute, a money now, right now, at this moment. But that doesn't mean that if we're cut $600,000 from the state, that $18,000 is now a lot of money. So I think we have to be really careful. And I'm not saying we don't, we don't address it ever. Maybe in the fall, we look, and maybe we know where we're going in the fall. Maybe we know where we're going closer to town meeting. But we can't promise people things that we don't have or we don't know where we're going.
I'll say it again. You just came up with the number that I, $600,000 we stand to lose. If we lose that $600,000, we have plenty of buffer. And it's not going to affect anything for all the reasons I've already said. This $18,000 doesn't amount to anything compared to the total budget. And, but to have employees who are not happy, or even worse, unhappy with the situation, could definitely cost you a lot more. And like I said, that would be a terrible business decision because any business needs to take care of their employees first. Otherwise, nothing will work.
Okay, I, I tend to agree with you, George, but my, my feeling is I think we need to hold off a little bit on this. And get to your point of disgruntled employees. I would hate to say, hey, you know, you're going to get this pay raise and then two or three weeks from now, we have to pull it out from under them. So I.
Retroactive, Charlie, like I said.
I, I understand that, George, but I'm just, I, I get, I'm between both of you, all right? I understand where both points of view are coming from. And I just think that, and I'm not one to want to put off decisions that we don't need to put off. But I think it would be better for everyone if we put this off for a short period of time and then we can come back and look at it a little bit more clearly. My own.
Retroactive, if you make it retroactive.
Speak, hey, hold on. Is that this 2% pay, to what they really owed, in my opinion, this 2% is very little. So I, I understand, and I understand would be, it would be a, a little bit of a push from, but I just think we should hold off a little bit of time here. Get a clear picture of where we are with revenue and proposals and where we are with expenses and that type of thing. Because we really don't know where we're, where we are.
Well, just for the record, I'm dead against this. We're throwing huge amounts of money at different projects and we can't come up with a 2% raise for eight employees. Well, I think, I think that is.
Part of my point is that some potential projects that have been proposed, I think, have to take a backseat. But that's, that's another discussion for another time, so.
No one, no one is saying never, no one is saying, I don't think there's one person here that's saying never. What we're saying.
Retroactive, Lisa.
All right, George, George, please, okay, please, okay. We can have disagreements, we can, but please, let's keep our voices and our emotions, at least in check.
So, I think, I think we all agree, right, Charlie? I think, I think a consensus is, is that if we have money, then yes, these people would get their raises. And would it be retroactive? Of course it would be. But if we can address this in the fall or, or in June, if we know what we're doing in June, we do it in June. If we know what we're doing in the fall, then we do it in the fall.
Put that into motion.
I, I don't.
Retroactive, and I'll be fine with it.
But we, go ahead, Charlie, sorry.
I, I think, I'm going to come back to it. I'm going to look at it as what I would do. I would rather not hear that I'm going to get a pay raise at all than to hear I'm going to get a pay raise and then have it pulled out from under me. That's my, so that's my issue, George, is that I, I firmly agree with you that, that this needs to be a pay raise, but I, I'm just not, at this, this particular moment, comfortable with doing it for both sides.
Well, just remember this when we start talking about other projects. All right.
I, I, yeah, Georgia, I, I agree with you.
I agree.
Do, do I hear a motion?
Oh, not for me. Well, I make a motion that these people get their raises.
All right, I'm, I'm not going to be able to second that. All right, then, lacking a motion, Tim, we'll, we'll move on. All right, the, the next item is the Library Screening Committee, Eliminatory Screening Committee has forwarded two names for interviews for the position of Director of Libraries. So if. If, if I could, I'd just interject to begin with my own viewpoint of this. Is that, my feeling is that. The interviews in the recommendation should come from the library, the Board of Library Trustees. I'm not, I'm not gonna get, I'm not gonna want to get involved in an interview process. And give them a director when I don't know anything about libraries. Paul Seig, uh, as as chairman had forward one question that he wanted all, or one topic he wanted us to have questions on. But I I feel far more comfortable in saying to the Board of Library Trustees, go out, do your interviews, give us the name you want. And we'll go from there, alright?
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
Alright, but George, okay, pardon me, why don't we, before we have motions, why don't we have a moment?
Oh, I thought, I thought you were done discussing.
Well, I I.
Okay, no, no, go ahead.
It's yours, yeah, there's yours and Lisa's opinion to go also, so, yes, George, give me your opinion.
My opinion?
Yes.
On, on this library director.
Yes.
And, right now, for the next foreseeable future, until we know where we are financially. I would suggest that we freeze all hiring. If we can't afford to give few people a very tiny raise, I don't see how we can afford to go out and hire more people. So that is my suggestion.
Okay, uh, Lisa.
So I concur with you, Charlie, that I don't want to be involved in the library hiring. Also, um, Dorothy is retiring, so you can't have a library without a director. Um, so, I mean, and those are gonna be some decisions that we're gonna have to make. If we end up cutting departments, cutting the library by more than what the state allows us to cut them by, which we have done in the past. They will lose their accreditation and no one will be able to get books at any other, you know, library a- across the Commonwealth. So, um, you know, we, we have to be careful, we're not hiring an- another person, we're just replacing a retiree. So I I don't want to have anything to do with the hiring process. Again, you, when you look at their budget, you might not be able to, they might not be able to afford to do. A forty hour week or a thirty-five hour week, and they may have to make budget cuts, but they still have to have a director. So uh, it's just replacing a director.
And there's no one currently there that can act as a director?
I believe one of the two candidates is working in the library, but I, I don't know for sure, so.
I.
Go ahead.
To your point, I think by going forward with this, we're not necessarily. At, gonna be adding an employee, okay? And once, and that would be a decision that would be upon uh financial ability. And within the realm of the library trustees. So, to to your question is. I I think we would be um, to the idea of hiring a hiring freeze, I don't think we would be. Oh, thwarting that freeze uh with interviewing for a library director. You get my point?
I think so.
Okay, alright, um, so, do I have a motion to?
I'm gonna make a motion to throw it back to the library trustees to bring forward one candidate.
Okay, do I hear a second? I'll, I'll second that motion. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Tip roll.
Tim, you're on mute.
I'm bad with that tonight, uh, Selectman Grunwald.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Selectman Sullivan.
Aye. The uh, next item on the agenda is uh, accepting uh David's letter of retirement. Uh, as we know, uh, David has sent us a letter, he's uh planning on retiring as of December eleventh. Of uh twenty twenty. Um. I'm sorry to, well, to some extent, I I say, I'm sorry to see you go. I hope that you can enjoy your retirement, David, um, you know, and that. You have many years of enjoyable retirement. Um, that being said, um, I like to uh entertain a motion to accept the letter. Or if there's any discussion before that.
I haven't made a motion, I will um regretfully um, accept this letter of um, retirement.
George, do I hear a motion? Okay, motion made and seconded, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tim, the roll.
I did it again, Selectman Grunwald.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Selectman Sullivan.
Aye, uh, if I could now, um, I would hope that we get on uh immediately. On uh, the process of. Uh, trying to hire a new town administrator. Um, I think it's imperative that we get someone in there. So that he has a little bit of idea of what's going on before uh David retires. So I'll, I'll just say that, I, I think we should uh do that.
Do which, Charlie, I did quite.
Well, start the process of hiring a new town administrator. Advertising and uh so forth and.
Does that require a motion?
Well, I'm making, I'm making that statement.
Yeah, it's not, it's not on the agenda right now, so we could put it on for another time.
Alright, uh, next item is uh, the resignation letter from uh Chris Chapin. As the uh alternate um Board of uh Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, effective April thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh, Mr. Chapin, uh, in his letter stated he no longer lives in town. Uh, so that would be a problem, so I'll uh open it for discussion or a motion.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The roll, please, Tim.
Yep, Selectman Grunwald.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Selectman Sullivan.
Aye.
Alright, motion passed, Susan, it passes unanimously.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the appointment of Paula Riley as an election worker.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Tim, the roll.
Yep, uh, Selectman Grunwald.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Selectman Sullivan.
Aye. Uh, item fourteen.
Passes unanimously.
Pardon me, item fourteen is the reassignment of Joshua Simmons. From temporary twenty-four hour a week uh signal operator to hot time signal operator. Effective May twenty-six, twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Grunwald.
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Selectman Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number fifteen is the reassignment of Kobe Amber. From signal operator trainee to probationary full-time signal operator. Any discussion? Now, accept the motion, if there is one?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Selectman Sullivan.
Aye, I believe that's all I have.
That was a lot.
It is.
Yes.
Alright, um, Tim, is there anything that you need to go over from old business? Or or David?
I do have.
Ally.
I do have one thing on there, uh, I included in the packet, am I on yet? I included in the packet a new timeline for the annual town meeting, uh, what sort of deadlines we have facing us. Uh, the deadline has to be posted by the fifth of January, of January, of June. Let me bring this up on the screen, uh, and the warrant, uh, the, um, sorry, the uh omnibus has to be posted a week later. Uh, so the twelfth, uh, so I've laid out, uh, there's a calendar in front of you. And also, we need to finalize everything by um, the meeting on the first. So ideally, we would have a meeting sometime this week or next week to do the warrant review. And then we'll have the budget, uh, Kim has suggested starting the budget on the June second, as she's on vacation next week. So I don't know if we want to decide that now, or if we want to just find a time to meet.
I I think that, um, I think having a meeting with the finance committee on June second is is prudent. And something we should do, um, as of a meeting to review the warrants, when do you guys want to do that?
Um, would next Monday be good, George?
Uh, should be.
Next Monday is Memorial Day.
Oh, well, about next Tuesday. Every, no, no, next, next Monday is Groundhog Day, Tim.
Every day is Groundhog Day nowadays.
Which is also true. The twenty-sixth, Tim?
Uh, twenty-sixth would be the day that Charlie's recommending, yes.
Okay, that works. David, when is that conference with um, the House Ways and Means Committee?
Uh, I, that I, that I don't know, I'd have to, I can find out tomorrow and get the information to everybody.
Uh, you already, you already sent it out, Doug.
Oh, that, that, um, the Senator Roderick's, uh, meet, that's next Friday.
Okay, so, I mean, we'll have some better idea maybe on Friday, um, about where we're going, so, um. It's a good thing to be uh able to participate.
Well, no, we, it'll be this, I'm sorry, it'll be this Friday, so we'd have it in time for the.
Right, for the warrant review, yep, so that'll be perfect timing for us, okay?
The next meeting is uh, twenty-sixth, the twenty-sixth, okay?
It'll be the twenty-sixth, and we'll probably do it a little bit later in the evening, the finance committee asked that it was not at five, so. Maybe, do we want to do six o'clock, seven o'clock?
Six is fine.
Yeah, and could, uh, on the same night, I'd like to have a board of health uh meeting.
That's gotta be a lot of, of uh, work, George, just so you, just so you're aware.
What?
So we don't, well, we, we're not gonna do the budget, we're just gonna do the warrants, the articles.
Okay.
Okay, I just warning.
Yes, no, I I agree with you, Charlie, it's a lot for one night, especially when you have both the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen, so.
Well, I I shouldn't take five minutes, ten minutes at the most.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, that's all I got.
Okay, Charlie, anything?
No, other than I'll need a little recess. Before we get into executive session.
Alright, so let's, um, do you want to take a five-minute recess? Or do you want to make a motion to go into executive session and then take a five-minute recess?
That sounds good.
Okay.
Motion, we go into executive session this time.
Okay, to discuss strategy, uh, we're gonna do the first one, we're gonna do opposite. We're gonna talk Jessica first and then Excel, so then you can leave after that, okay? So we're gonna go into executive session first and not to reopen um, an open session. To just conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, treasure collector Jessica Thomas. And number two, which um, Charlie will not be a part of, he will recuse himself. Um, to go into discuss uh strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public party and the chair. So declares Excel Recycling versus Town of Free Town, and the chair does declared. Um, do I have motion, uh, acceptance of those motions, or do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
Selectman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Selectman Sullivan?
Aye.
Alright, so I will stop the live stream and we'll be good to go into executive.